It is 7:02 and I call the meeting on the planning board to order. Margaret is, oh, Margaret, no.
She's not on.
Margaret is not on yet. So to start the meeting, the first order of business is to approve the previous minutes that everyone had a chance to read.
I did want to approve as written. Second.
So moved to seconded, any discussion? There are no discussions. Paul?
Hi.
Tommy?
Hi.
Kathy is I. And next thing on the agenda is the treasurer's report.
We have a registration fee for Grace. She's doing classes or some of them at the APA.
Okay.
American Planning Association. That's to be approved.
Yeah. I just sign up top.
Yeah. Did you see for the CPT city?
Yeah.
That's what that is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Five dollars. Anything else, Mr. Treasurer?
That is it.
Okay.
All we got.
And planners report.
Just texting Maria to see if anybody else from recreation was going to join tonight. So 5G, the small cell wireless is back on the warrant. So I believe I forwarded that along today to everybody for the future public hearing on that. And so I will, so along with the other town council comments on the other articles. So I'll meet with David Brooks and Laura Woden on that. Again, prior to the public hearing, which is scheduled for May 12th, no, I'm sorry, March 12th. So more, there are more on that during the public hearing. The expression of interest solicitation for Holy Angels is going to be going out soon. You might remember there were two previous requests for proposals that were, I think, steered by the Economic Development Committee. Couple of years ago, which didn't solicit any responses for proposals for the redevelopment of Holy Angels site in Thompson block. So we've taken a kind of a step back on that to instead of do a formal RFP requiring development firms to submit bids on what they would propose to construct theirs is to rather just enter into informal conversations with developers who may be interested in doing something there so we can get a better understanding of what is actually possible.
Is it the entire block or just Holy Angels?
We'll discuss the entire block. And if obviously just as a, we don't want to leave anything out. Or leave any, if somebody has a good idea, but it would require the, the rest of the block, it'd be good to hear from them rather than just have it be so narrowly to Holy Angels house. So my discussion with you on the other day. On top of that, I'm hoping and Grace is kind enough to help me out with this is constructing a request for proposals for essentially the same topic, but it's to solicit an engineering and planning firm to bid on putting together a redevelopment. Like scenarios of potential redevelopment, including that block and what, what would be needed for like doing a pre permitting analysis, what, how is the 200 foot riverfronts going to impact potential redevelopment? Whether, whether it be for construction or reconstruction of the buildings, whether it be for expansion of parking. You know, what can we reasonably expect to get out of that slice of property where we to redevelop it? So trying to get that out so I can get some responses and, and actually get some some good information to go off of when we're actually when the town's looking to actually dispose of that property.
It's not Rustine wrapped into that too, or is it just the stuff?
Yeah, just, just the other side.
Is there a reason they didn't?
I don't think there's an appetite. I don't think
Okay.
I know the to my knowledge, there hasn't been a discussion about disposing of Rustine in any way, you know what I mean? So, so I'm not looking at that currently, but that leads me to my next thing, which is I'm also working and hopefully finalizing soon an RFP for the lease of the Rustine. As you remember, town meeting, town approved, letting the selectmen go out, enter into a lease for the library space. So that's what we're looking to hope to do. Advertise that for retail only, you know, something that's going to be very similar use, you know, needs the shelving that's already in there sort of thing. So working on that. The certificate of occupancy for the community center building, building only was issued, but not the parking lot. There's still some issues with architectural access board compliance with some of the parking spaces at that, at that location. So that, but that will be coming back to the planning board per the DBW. I just don't have a, an anticipated date as to when they will be resubmitting an updated parking plan for for the community center. But that will come back here. Have somebody interested is looking into discontinuing a portion of a public road to then be purchased privately. Which is an interesting and, and potentially dizzying scenario of a process and paperwork. Has anything like that to this board's knowledge happened in town?
Never seen it go in that direction.
It's a very weird situation where there is the right of way of the street like notches out into this essentially what this person's property.
What road?
Stoddard. And so if you were to look at the GIS maps.
That's one off Westboro.
High Street, right? Right off a high street.
Oh, okay.
The one that came down.
Yep.
But it's a very, it's a weird scenario where you actually look at the lot, but off there's like a rectangle carved out in their front yard. And that rectangle is the street for some reason, even though it's not paved, it's the right way. And so they obviously are interested in like, how do we discontinue this portion of the right of way and then get it? So I'll be working on that.
They don't like that triangle. They don't want the whole. Okay.
Yeah, no, they don't want the entire street, obviously. They want the, the part that doesn't make any sense.
Is it paved?
No.
All right. Cause we just, I mean, we just had somebody contacting my firm trying to get the town of Shrewsbury to discontinue a paper road.
Okay.
And there's a, and it could be, it, it's almost like you're not discontinuing it, you're redrawing the
Yeah.
Right away.
Yeah. I think it still would require some formal action from town meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, to abandon or discontinue whatever.
Like Misco Road, yeah, behind those elementary school, the middle school. There was something. We have discontinued roads. I mean,
Right.
I heard, I never had this board, I heard you guys don't.
So like, there was a time where the town went out and figured out all the roads that it was going to, and it decided these are the roads that are public ways. If you weren't on there, you were a private way.
Yeah.
And in the last 10 years, we went out to some of the private ways and said, we're not going to plow you anymore unless you pass a test for safety or, or bring it up to a minimal standard.
Okay.
And then we've made ways public for private purposes, public, private purposes, like Kona's Beach Road recently.
That's right.
Cause it benefited both a landowner and the town.
Was it there something though, on Misco Road by the Mendon Town Line? It felt like it was something that we had to do and, and amended. Well, there was an issue with someone wanting to put a house there. And I mean, this was recently, the last, last year or two and
We didn't, yeah, we didn't think there was legal access. Not into up.
Right.
There was, it was, road was a nicer road on the Mendon side and a dirt track.
Well, it's dirt tracks. Yeah. I mean, that's, it's basically a discontinued.
Well, never, never, never was, I think. I'm sorry.
But Paul, Paul, if I may, this is a reconfigured road, not a discontinued.
Right. That's what I think so.
Yeah. Why don't you come back to us with more information on that, Mr. Planner?
Yeah, well, I figured I guess.
And I wonder if they really need it reconfigured because a lot of times, you know, the, well, you know, is it a fee interest or is it just a, you know, is it, is it an easement? Often generally takes fees.
Yeah.
In its roads.
I mean, I did ask their attorney for more information regarding the deeds and things like that just today, but I figured I'd just post a question to you. For some reason it happened recently or something and the off chance it happened recently, I'm familiar with the process of discontinuing private roads, which is a lot easier.
All right.
Thank you. That was it.
Pleasant from planners report.
Yep.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions from Mr. Planner? Okay.
Oh, and I would just offer, I've sort of kept my planners reports brief to things that I think would be of interest to the planning board. But if you want a more detailed summary of everything I'm working on, I'd be happy to provide that.
That'll take hours. Okay. Hey, for future meetings, do folks want sort of a different board one? You know, paper thing before meetings about some of the stuff that might be something over this to me is fine because that has had to do with our, we're going near area.
Other than we used to have a ready template.
It was like surprise, what's going to surprise us tomorrow? So first on the agenda is approval, not quiet plans for 95 Westbury Street. Mr. Planner?
Oh yeah, I'll hand it off to, it looks like we have Peter Bemis, yeah, that to represent this. I'll just quickly know, I drove by the property today just to get a sense of what it looks like out in the fields. I mean, pretty much what I expected looking at the plans, you know? So, you know, it's, it, the lot looks like it's going to be fairly, correct me if I'm wrong, consistent with the two lots next to it as far as how it's developed and the, the the issues, you know, an initial dip into the lot and then being encumbered somewhat by Army Corps of Engineered Flow Achievements and those, those sorts of things. So I'll, I'll, I'll let Peter take it.
Because we, Peter Bemis Engineering Design Consultant. So this is basically four acres of land, round numbers, owned by Glenn Fowler. Our client Kyle McNamara has an agreement to purchase the lot.
This parcel A or?
The whole, the whole lot. So the reason why we've made this parcel A is the fact that we needed to create a land division. We're going to keep this as one property, although I've suggested Mr. McNamara that that land in the back, they talk usable and they could donate it to the Commonwealth. Since they, they bought it to the west. So the lots as, as was outlined, north of this have been developed. So this is the southern lot in sequence that Mr. Fowler had owned. Has its requisite frontage and area. We did do a separate exhibit for you showing the driveway so you could see access to the lot. Comes in off the street, will drop down, but then goes through the flats of where the storage area is for the Army Corps and then will rise back.
So this is now where there's already two houses with those long driveways.
This is the third lot of that sequence. And so Mr. McNamara has purchased this and built the home that's shown there. It's fairly straightforward. We do have to get an all legal head of stormwater permit from conservation. We have had a wetland scientist look at it. There's no wetlands in the flat section there. It's just a storage area. We've done our soil testing already with the Board of Health, soils are suitable. Very nice gravel. Water. So that part's going to be fairly straightforward. So it's just you folks endorsing a plan for the lot. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
So the only thing we're doing is cutting out parcel A, even though it's going to be commonly held. Why we don't want, what was the business purpose, I guess of doing this?
So there was a plan of land that was on record that indicated that this was not a building lot. And I just thought that was a misnomer. It did have frontage and area. I don't know why the board at the time did endorse it.
Also, so.
That was just, and it just said, and I, my, what I've been told is that it was for taxation purposes so that it wouldn't be taxed in a legal lot rate. But I even your assessor could have still been assessing it for total lot value because it does, yeah, because it doesn't matter. He does, his frontage and area, it's going to have the residual value regardless until someone makes other, some other determination that it is no longer.
And then parcel A was always part of the?
There was, there was no parcel A. So it was just shown as the lot itself. It did a three lots.
I got a question. Madam Chairperson, I got a question.
Actually, Tom, 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 before you talk, I just want to finish the clarification of why parcel A is being segregated out from the rest of the lot. So I'm still not clear on that. Then I'll, then you can ask any questions.
Okay. Yeah. Perfectly honest. So, so that if, if we were to endorse a plan without a lot line change, someone could imply that you did not have a Form A. A Form A is that you are changing a, a lot line somewhere on this lot. It, it, it would have been appropriate to have done this when they did the three lots to just have caught the line, have not made that distinction and said something about it not being buildable or not built. In this instance, it just shouldn't have been done that way, but it was. So, so, so we're correcting the history. And by doing so, we're actually putting a legitimate land division on the plan. We have a note there that these parcels will be kept contiguous, but that parcel, it would have to be deeded to an abiding property. You can't just leave it landlocked. So, so the Commonwealth of Massachusetts owns the land to the west and they would be a likely candidate to get that lot or it would just stay with lot one.
But if you, if we could wave a magic wand that was as magic as a Form A and take away a lot, the words and say that this lot isn't a buildable lot, you'd be okay with that?
Yeah, we would, right, right. We couldn't find a way to do that because, because if you, if you read the statute, you're supposed to, we, we ask you to endorse a plan. It's, there's an 81X is a procedure where you would be just reaffirming a plan. The board does not endorse that plan. That is just a plan that goes to the history of deeds. So if we didn't ask you to make a change, it would imply that that was an 81X plan. So we're asking you to endorse, an endorsement, we should make a change. So we thought about doing this different ways. We could have just taken this plenty of frontage. We could have actually taken a strip of frontage away and taken it all the way to the back. We didn't want to create that because to us that's sending the wrong message. We don't want it. Exactly. Or what are you going to do with this or do something? We're not trying to be creative in a, in a, and what it could be viewed as a negative way. We're just trying to make sure we comply with your requirements.
Well, it seems like there should be a better way to work.
You would hope, but there is.
I don't want to make you jump through.
Yeah.
Tom, you had something to say. I'm sorry to cut you off. I just was trying to.
Well, first, first of all, an 81X would not remove the note, the notation that it's not a buildable lot. Second of all, who put that note on there? Planning boards do not have that required to put on there because of the financial thing from, from the assessors. We only put that note line on there if it's a non-buildable area. It's, it's a drainage runoff. It's, it's, it's going to be used for, like we have up in, Paul, in your subdivision, we have
Yeah.
An area that set off that is not to be used as a buildable lot and we distinctly put that on the plan. So I guess I got to know who put that on the plan and why before we're going to take it off.
Yeah, you know, another time we would have that on there and it would be a good reason is that this was part of say a large lot frontage reduction plan. And once we, once we execute that, we say, you know, further development.
And it would be in perpetuity, there'd be a note to that effect. There would have been a lot more memorializing of that decision. In this case, it just seems as though the surveyor put that note on the plan to be, you know, correct, wrong and different. It shouldn't have been there because it did have frontage, it did have area. It should have just been noted as another lot. And, and left it at that case and what it just.
The main of that plan.
It's referenced on our sheet. I, you know, what I can take.
So there's no record of why?
I mean, we can look back to the minutes. So it's going to be.
It's going to be upstairs somewhere. I totally.
I didn't bring, I'm sorry. Again, has frontage, has area. We've shown you it has access.
Oh, most applicants do not volunteer their lot to be non-buildable. I, I've never seen that they convince that this is not buildable. That's not the language that a developer puts on or an app or an engineer puts on. Rarely is that put on for your, for your purposes. It's just put on because the planning board makes you put it on. So I'd like to know why the planning board required that on the plan before we proceed.
Unless you get. Authority to invoke that either would have been through, through subdivision, you could have denied the, the land, but this is not a subdivision. This is a Form A. So the authority.
Not of the planning board.
Sorry, sir. I, I, I just, it's one of the board members.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Tom Davidson is on the board, but basically what you're contending is that, that an error was made somewhere.
Somewhere.
And there's no record of why and how it was made. And the point Tommy's making is that, you know, this is a type of thing that you know, you, that you really need to find out why it was put on, which leads into almost like a catch 22 because if there's no record and you don't know who put, you know, then how I mean, is, is, is there a way to resolve this? I guess is my question, Tom. I mean, but was a mistake?
How can you say?
It looks like it wasn't.
Don't we have a record of this? Don't we have any application? Nothing in the file on this?
Well, yeah, unfortunately we've got four different plan references. One of them could be the correct plan, but I can't, so they go through them all on my phone.
And so through the chair, the, I know I've seen the most recent plan that was endorsed by the board. I'm sure it's one of the ones referenced. And I mean, that's not going to provide the board any insight into why it was denoted as such to look at that originally endorsed plan. Cause you're just going to see a plan that's very similar that shows that lot and it has a notation on it that says not buildable. So the only, again, the only thing I would offer to the board is if you, if you wanted to hold off on endorsement is I could attempt to pull whatever record of the of the discussion at the semin and typically, I mean, frankly, there's usually not much in the way of minutes as far as on A and Rs.
But, 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 but just, just a question. If, if the new engineering, if there's engineering that shows it's a buildable lot, it's a conforming lot, it's a buildable lot. You know, it, you know, it's all our bylaws and goes through conservation. Can't we not, and this is a serious question, can't we not just say this, make the determination that this is a buildable lot?
Well, so let's just, and I don't know, cause I agree with Tom. It's odd that it would be on there.
Yeah.
And the only thing that came to my mind is if it was the analogy is if it was a large lot frontage, we would have a note line on there that said that this is not, not further subdivisible or further developable. Developable. I don't know what the line, what the language actually was, but if it says it's not buildable.
Yours, yours is a retention.
Actually, let me, let me ask Margaret, Margaret, Tom, sorry, Tom was in the queue. Yes, Tom, sorry.
Paul's, Paul's, Paul's is a retention pawn. A detention or retention pawn is another reason that we set it aside. And if you, if it's an unbuildable parcel, I mean, if it's an unbuildable lot, you put parcel on there. I see lot as a buildable and it's parcel if it's not buildable. The word's not a buildable is, is very strange to put on there. There's just no reason other than the planning board required it.
Just, just to be clear, because the build, the, the, the buildability part, that's your zoning enforcement officer. If it has frontage and has area, then it complies with your requirements for plan endorsement. We still need to get a board of health permit. We still need to get a conservation permit for stormwater. We still need a building permit.
I think.
That's the buildability part. So it's really a misnomer to write buildability though.
I think is that for what you've done here, for example, where you say parcel A,
Yes.
That if there is something that doesn't meet the national.
That's parcel.
Then we, we call it a parcel and there's often we have the words not, you know, not buildable, something or we're going to know or.
And, and there is, we do, we do identify that parcel A is not in itself a building lot. Lot one is, lot one has the frontage, it has the area.
And it's, it was, it was lot one on the plan, not parcel one.
That, that's the problem. That's what I'm having trouble with is a prior plan or endorsed a plan that said that lot was not buildable.
So what was suggested to us was just not to do this, to not change the plan of land at the registry, to come in and just get endorsement of the access perm, access plan, if you will. That didn't make sense to us because first of all, there's a plan at the registry that's, that's wrong. It shouldn't say that. It's not, that plan shouldn't be there. It was filed. I can't take it back. It's already there, but it's wrong because it does mean.
It's not a last.
You, you had, Michael, you have it because they, 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 when we got involved, that plan was already part of the discussion.
I was going to look at the.
Oh, yeah. If you could bring them up at the reg, then most.
The most recent, I guess, is plan book that's 737, Plan 22.
Yeah, that could just be the land to the south, but if not, that's going to be, otherwise it's going to be the very next. My, my son Zach, we did the research on, so I don't, I don't remember which one's which.
Yeah.
It is that. Okay. Good. I'll bring it up. Oh, perfect.
I'm going to give yourself sharing.
I shouldn't just get any shares.
But for looking over people's shoulders.
You never look at work at the registry. Not good for you.
It's not usually get out that far.
Yeah, I'm just pulling up Franklin over and over.
That's exactly my problem too. I'm going with some word.
Try a Western.
Yeah. So you see parcel three on the left here?
So it said parcel three though. Yeah. Remaining land of it's not to be considered a buildable lot.
And we wouldn't do that for retention or drainage or it looks like a.
For two, for a two house. It's not a subdivision, is it? No, I mean, for two house, for two house locks, we wouldn't have had it.
You know, that's a stormwater overflow for the Army Corps, which, and they've already reviewed the proposal. And they've already basically signed off. We do have to give them a final engineered plan. We've not done that, but there's been communications already with them.
Yeah. No, I can picture these lots. I know exactly what they look like from riding by them.
So, and so again, what I've told is that if again, if you look at it's not to be considered again, for purposes of taxation is what I believe was the motivating factor. But I would assume your assessor still assessed it fully because there was no reason for him not to.
Yeah. And I can confirm, I did look at the tax records on it. It has been, it has been taxed as a buildable lot, even though this says it's not to be considered.
Okay.
Uh, maybe tax.
Can you just check the, it looks like that straight line frontage 300 and I'm not seeing why it wouldn't have met the dimensional requirements back then.
That's me.
300. Yeah, 301.
Yeah. So they listed it probably as a remaining land, but then they, they, they're just the, the, the building portion of it. Just, I guess, I don't think the note should have been there. It, it met frontage, it met area or.
And where's the street? Is it down here?
Right there. Yeah.
So the, so maybe.
And so there's like, if you, if you're, if you're looking at from the street, if you're looking at these lots, they drop down off the street and then it sort of goes across a long across a little valley area, which is flood storage, Army Corps flood storage, then back up to where the houses are.
Yes. So Tommy, I don't know if you can see this plan, what's different from lot two, lot one and what is? and what is parcel three, the one that says not to be considered a buildable lot? Lot two, the frontage, none of the frontage is within the hundred-year flood zone. Lot one, it looks like the driveway accesses the back of the lot, not through the hundred-year flood zone. And now, the lot that we're dealing with, the parcel, which was parcel three, it looks like the hundred-year flood zone goes across the entire frontage of the lot, so you have to.
It goes across the entire frontage of, one, two.
It drops right, it looks like it stops there.
There.
So that's the only thing I can think of, is that they didn't want to deal with.
But that's the Army Corps problem.
That is, well, we have to save.
You, you do too, because zoning with your enforcement officers, or the, the building department, we should have to show them that we are mitigating, which we, we can.
And you said the Army Corps is on this, and.
Not with us correctly, but with the proponent and the property owner.
Are you going to have to put in some compensatory stories?
Yes, oh yes, oh yes.
Through the chair, regarding access, my assumption for the, the board's subdivision rules and regulations as it pertains to A and Rs is that the request to provide driveway profiles is an attempt to identify whether or not there's reasonable access.
Right.
Yeah.
That's why we do have it, but it's going across a flood zone, that's an easement.
Can I make a couple?
That's not the hundred-year flood, that's the Army Corps two sixty-nine, or two seventy-one.
The plan, and all, all I can say is what the plan says, there's a slope easement and a one-hundred-year flood zone.
That changed, because this was nineteen ninety-eight, did that change, like a decade, like?
I don't know.
References on our plan.
Yeah, those two, something, I mean, I see the two seventy line and the two sixty, so we, you know, they're, they're dropping down into.
Tommy, you didn't sign it. It's not defined by L C.
Junior, Larry, Hup, and Stalin Ray.
What junior signed it?
Or Tom?
A couple comments on this, one, you've got parcel three, which indicates it's not a buildable lot at this time. So I'm not so sure that the, the language not to be considered a buildable lot needs to be there as long as this remains a parcel. And as far as the access, through any kind of a flood easement, you just have to flood proof, show us that you have a safe access through your flood proofing of, proofing of utilities, or, or that way, or raising the, however it's done, you need conservation, you need Army Corps. But for the planning board, dimensionally, it looks fine, access is the only issue. It's already designated as a.
If we looked at the plan, I think I'll.
Parcel indicates it's not buildable, so. It's looked okay to me.
What would the next steps be, Tommy?
Oh, for clarifications on, Tommy, this is.
If I, if I, if I, this plan, I would come in with it still saying parcel, removing the words not to be considered a buildable lot, and showing access approved by those authorities that need to, that you have safe and adequate access to the parcel through either wetlands or, or flood easement.
So, Tom, we have a plan here that shows, that shows the access. They'll obviously have to get it approved by Army Corps before they can build it.
Where's the access? I don't see the access, I don't see access, or parcel three, I don't see access like that.
I'll bring it up for you.
Yeah, we have, we have it here on paper, but you'll see it in a second.
All right.
Just want to get to look at the Ken shop. Sorry, we're going to need Army Corps approvals.
But if, if the language was on there because it did not have access approved by either conservation or Army Corps, that parcel indicates it's not buildable, not the language there.
Okay. But we don't generally demand the approvals in advance, that's, we're looking at the dimensions and.
So the.
Show me the access.
Yeah, so Tom, this is, Tom, this is the access that's provided with the, the Form A that is under, for consideration today. I'm just going to switch back real quick to the A and R plan, so you, you see that. This is the A and R, you see it's denoted lot one, that is what was previously referred to as parcel three on the plan we were just looking at earlier. And again, this is the.
So they, so this is going to be, this is given to us as a new lot?
Correct.
Yes.
And, and the access has been approved? Or is it just, I mean, is it, is the building?
They're showing us a proposed, they're showing, like, like with most of these, they're showing us a proposed driveway that could be built, and we've had folks, as long as they show it to us, that's not necessarily where the driveway goes.
Right, and, you know, they're not, if, if the Army Corps doesn't approve it, then they're not going to build it, but if we are, you know, that's, that's not our.
So don't, so don't we just, then don't we need an Army Corps, okay, saying that they can cross over that, and?
To get, to sign, they do, we don't, to sign the A and R, I don't think we do, yes.
No, we, we have inadequate access at the moment, they, they have no, they, they only have adequate access, they, they need further permission to access this lot to build a house, they don't have that.
Tom, we never, we never get approval of plans when we sign A and Rs, we just look at.
And, and I've never just, uh, saying, oh, it says do not, not a buildable lot, oh, fine, we'll just take it off, it probably means nothing. I've never taken that kind of a callous approach to those words on a plot plan. Developers don't put that on, their planning boards do. Why do we put it on? Because it wasn't a buildable lot, why? Because it didn't have adequate access, does it have adequate access now?
No, we're, we're guessing now, do it was or not, it may have been because, for tax purposes, it may have been, you know.
An assumption of.
It may have been an assumption, I don't know. But basically, what we're talking about is if it's dimensionally correct and we approve it, and Army Corps is an app, I mean, they need something to work with, then it doesn't happen. You know, so I don't see what the problem is approving it, because it's still going to be subject to the Army Corps, and it's still going to be subject to CONCOM.
Yeah, there's no impediment to act, if there was, if we were crossing a wetland that was vast, then there could be an issue potentially, but, but even if they, if they hadn't filled any wetlands yet, you'd still have a limited project. In this instance, the only thing we're crossing is an easement that the Army Corps has for flood storage, and we do need to mitigate that, and we do need to get their final permission for a final document, but that, that isn't an impediment to access. It's not like there's a cliff here, there's a drop off, but it's not a cliff.
I had a deep visit down where the access was actually under the Charles River. Always something else.
I don't like that very assess.
We got, we got, eventually.
Okay.
So do I hear a motion? What do you want for the question?
I, I, Tom, I, I hear your, your concern, I, I think our gatekeeping is seeing the frontage and the dimensions, and the driveway profile, and I think that they do have two other, at least two, or three, maybe at least three gatekeepers that also have to sign off on this, with the building inspector, the CONCOM, and possibly the Army Corps.
Definitely the Army Corps of Engineers, so that's, that's the hard one, so.
So I don't even know that, I'm not, I can.
So is that a motion?
I, I.
I like what you're saying, but I just, we said, if it's not going to come back to us, if it's going to go from us to the building inspector and conservation, then it's going to have a house built, I agree. But if it's going to come back to us in any way, because we overlooked something, because we didn't take our time and do any research, then I have a problem with it.
I, I, I hear you, and I, I'm, I'll, I'll make the motion, discussion, I move to approve it as presented.
I'll point out that Paul figures he'll be off the board, but.
He'll come back till June.
And I will second that motion. And any discussion on that motion?
I'm, I am, having, having ridden my bicycle best there a million times, I'm a hundred percent certain they're going to see the Army Corps of Engineers, which is going to be a lot harder than getting our approvals, so I, I, I agree.
I'm in line. So any other discussion, or should we have a vote? Here, no more discussion, all in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Catherine?
Aye.
Tommy?
No.
Four to one.
Four to one.
Thank you.
All right, and would, would you endorse now that I could, if you were to, if you don't mind, saying two?
Sign, one unsigned, you have plans for us?
They're right there on the table.
How many we got?
Uh, yeah, I think I gave you four.
Did you pay?
I did pay.
You don't have to sign this one.
Are you going to record the driveway plan with this plan?
It's not a recordable, it's a plan.
Kathy, do you want to go first?
Okay.
Bring it on before you, you're sitting with your.
Assign.
Actually, hang on, because he's pointing out that he's not going to record that driveway profile, we require our plans to have a driveway profile.
Oh, on them, oh, yeah, oops.
So as a land surveyor, though, we don't, we don't do, that's what I was saying to Michael, is we have the separate plan. If you'd like, I can put that on as an eight and a half by eleven with the, with the plan, you just can't put it on as a plan of land. If you follow.
It's a labor.
Yeah, it usually gets in the.
The eight and a half by eleven of that can go on, it's a registry, we're fine with that. If, if, you.
See, here's, you, you just showed us that you're going to give us a driveway that works for.
Correct, yeah, it's an engineered plan, but this is all that you've ever recorded, nobody's ever going to see that there's a. But I can record, I can record that as an, as an instrument, the, the engineered plan can go on record as an instrument, but not as a plan.
This will, this will say in this little gum on the, what is now referred to as ninety-five West River, is that what it's, whatever, whatever the, the.
Yeah.
That, that'll go on a newly created file for, in the building, files for this address. But, but, whatever the board.
Okay. Wants, but I don't have a problem, if you want to make that a condition of your, your vote tonight, that can go on as an eight and a half by eleven, I'm fine with that, because that is what we're showing you.
Recordable plan for planning board, why are we making exceptions?
It, it's, again, the, the requirements of land division, that plan does all of those requirements.
But our rules and regs require the plan to show a driveway profile.
It actually, we, usually it's just the locates, which is the location.
No, we usually have also the, the profile, so we can tell it's not a cliff.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I mean, just like we have a locus on here.
Yeah, why is there an issue providing, I understand what you're saying, since it's a land division, but why is there an issue putting the driveway profile on, because those are the ones we usually do get?
Right.
So why is it an issue just?
I'd sign it with driveway profile on the plan. You can, you know, what we generally need is something that shows the proposed location of the driveway and the grade. I think you've probably gone above and beyond that in your large plan.
Yeah.
But we need it to show on what's getting recorded.
So the only thing that's holding me from putting that on is the sheet two, then, with just with the registry block, so, you know, I, 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 I don't have a problem making that annotation on the plan that you're going to put in your file today, and we'll record it. Because it's, the sheet one of one is driveway plan, it, it, it can, it can accompany this. I just, my, I know my land surveyor, he's not going to want to seal a flow profile plan, it's an engineered plan. The engineer has sealed that, but all it's, all that that plan is missing right now is a registry block, because that's the only way the registry will accept a plan, so if you allow me to do that, and we'll just put the square in the lower left-hand corner of the sheet, and write for registry use only, and, and then that will be.
Planning boards require a land surveyor stamp on all its plans that we approve, not an engineer, a surveyor.
We, we have that, we have that, Tom.
And I'm hearing that once the driveway gets put on there, he's not going to get a surveyor stamp.
So are we okay with it if this gets the, the registry use only block on it, and they get filed together?
I don't know what registry use only means.
Right here.
For a plan to go to the registry, indeed, you need to have that on the plan, that's the only thing that's missing on the driveway plan.
Yeah, so it's going to be reported.
I will reduce with that, that's the only way I can do with that and satisfy you, and I understand your concerns from your local requirement, so I'm trying to bridge the gap in my head while I'm standing here.
Yeah, so are we? This isn't what we normally get.
Yeah, I know, I have a problem with that, but it's not a, a method, I mean, do we need to have.
Motion approved, passed four to one, subjects of the driveway plan being recorded with the A and R.
Okay.
And to take that while, yeah, while you're signing that, just going to re-.
Everyone's signing, could someone explain to me why this, the registry will not accept the driveway on this plan?
They would, he's saying is.
Right, but why not on the plan, except why that's.
Their prescribed requirements. Form A. And I guess you can ask.
The planning board vote to waive the, uh, plan on, the driveway on the signed plan?
What, Tom?
That has, that has, does the, did the planning board waive the requirement of a, of an access and signed by a surveyor on plan?
Two times, one on site, okay.
The, uh, Tom, the board didn't vote to waive any requirements, I don't believe, it was, uh, the, the motion was to endorse.
Is, is there a, Tom, requirement to have the access and a surveyor's stamp on the same plan that the planning board signs?
There is a surveyors.
On the plan with this, is the, the planning board endorsing a plan that does not have a surveyor's stamp and the access on the same plan?
Where they're going to be recorded to get.
They're going to be recorded, it's going to be recorded with the engineered plan showing the, showing the driveway access and profile.
And they'll be planning board signatures on all of those documents?
They will be recorded together, so we'll sign this.
Planning board signatures on, on the driveway, the planning board will, will sign the driveway plan without a, without a surveyor's stamp, really?
Um, it has an engineer's stamp on it.
Engineers are qualified in that. Only engineers can do it if the surveyor is the original surveyor, the surveyor that's doing it now is the original surveyor, he can designate a registered professional land engineer to do the plans, but if this is a different surveyor than the original plan nineteen ninety-eight, it's required that a land surveyor endorses the plan and all of the access and, and, and parameters, all of the measurements. This driveway is going to have a certain distance and a certain width, and that, all, those are all lines, those are done by a surveyor for Massachusetts law and Upton's requirements, Upton's bylaws.
Bylaws that detailed, the requirements that we added, you know, ten, fifteen years ago for the driveway profile.
But he's, I mean, he's, he's, he's correct that, the, in the, in the subdivision rules and regulations, there's a description of the, what is right there, right, that's, it says that that should be accompanied with, with the plan.
Does it say accompanied?
A plan that is, shall, an endorsement shall contain the following information. All, all plot plans submitted for A and Rs endorsement shall contain the following information, and then it does, it. All, all plot plans submitted for A and R's endorsement shall contain the following information, and then it does, it, that means the driveway and the access. Uh, but it sounds like the, the, the board was comfortable with, uh, attaching this to the, uh, the survey plan. Um, as a way of meeting that requirement to say that they will, uh, be recorded at the same time together, as almost as though it's a sheet one and sheet two.
That's, that's the word for it. I, I disagree with Tom that it's different than what we, what we normally do, but. This driveway plan is also more detailed than what we normally get or require. So I, I'm, I'm, my feeling, Tom, and it's just me, is that the, on balance, it's acceptable.
Is that detail from a surveyor or an engineer?
Driveway?
Yeah.
The driveway profile is stamped by a, uh, engineer.
That, that's, uh, only a surveyor sets lot lines and, and, and measuring lines like that. That's, no, it's not an engineer's job.
No, the, the surveyor, the lot line.
That's the whole reason, it's the whole reason a planning board has one plan with a locus and a data table and a surveyor's stamp and access. It's all on one plan. There's no additional information that can be lost and put aside somewhere. It's all on one plan. Stamped and signed. Why are we doing it this way? You've already got the vote, so you don't need me. I've already had, uh, enough to say.
Is this discussion recorded with that? Thank you. I don't expect it to go to record.
Mr. Davidson, your protest is noted in the, in the minutes.
Thank you for your time, we see you. Sorry.
Oh, thank you.
Doing this. Sorry, Paul.
Can you tell I had my wisdom tooth out yesterday?
Oh, no!
Oh, that, oh, I got all your wisdom out of there, huh? Taking the shot in Nova Cave.
Dr. Goggins, but was chasing mine for twenty years. I, I outlasted her. She retired.
Are you still got?
I still got him.
I lost mine when I was a kid. Oh, well, we're gonna add to your page. Uh, that's what the planning board does. Okay. Next item on the agenda is major site plan modification filed by the town of Upton Recreation Commission. Um. There is nobody from the Recreation Commission, I believe, who's able. Is there anyone from the Rec Commission that can?
Rick, you're not on. Rick Porter?
I didn't see him.
No.
Okay. Um, even though we had two separate site plan, um. Conditions, uh, requested and, um, they were kind of attached, but I would like, um, to take up the second one. The site plan filed by Minnesota Soccer Association for proposed lighting, six lights proposed for field, two lights proposed for upper parking lot. Um, there was a lot of discussion at this, at the last meeting, um, at the, we got a public hearing, um, and we, we heard quite a few comments on it. Um, I, you know, I am comfortable. Uh, we did get a letter that was requested, um, from Pat Roach. Um, actually, let me turn it over to Mike and he can start the.
I thought the letter was really good, cause Pat said, you know, you might not need to technically do everything, but we have a. Plan in place and he's looking for.
Yeah.
There to be improvements, and some of the improvements, if I remember right, the applicant said, we can do these things. So it seemed like things were moving in the right direction.
Uh, can we put that plan up on your chair? Um, Mike, can you put that, what a, what a page that is, a hundred and seven or a hundred and ten, whatever page that is on the plan that refers?
Oh, I, you mean the, um, the, uh, uh, improvements plan, the, uh, transition plan?
Right, cause I don't think Pat's letter addressed that, but, uh, this is a new, I, I didn't even know we had that.
Yeah, it meant, it mentions the existence of the, um, transition plan. Um, but doesn't call out those pages specifically. Well, yeah, I'll, I'll bring it up in just a moment here.
Do you wanna just give an overview and then I'll?
Oh, yeah, Kath, Kathy had reached out to me earlier today. She had a question about the, the letter that was submitted, um, just wanting clarification as to the sort of the two main questions that were asked. Um, I guess the, the main question, the letter's broken out, um, i- in that, in that order, which is, does the inclusion of the lighting, uh, in and of itself trigger? Uh, the requirement to provide other improvements on either the soccer field or the, the property at large, um, that needs to be, are accessible per the architectural access board? And the answer to that is. Uh, to answer directly is, is no. Um, there's, there's comments within that letter that states. You know, if it was, if, if, if it met a threshold of a hundred thousand dollars or more within a three-year period, then the answer to that question would be different. It would be, it would be yes. Um, and then the, the, the second question of, um, do these improvements? Uh, oh, is, is the Quanis Beach facility currently compliant with, uh, Architectural Access Board standards? And the answer to that is no. Um, the, and, and, uh, Pat notes the, the, the existence of the transition plan, uh, to, to state as such, right? And I, I think the, I think we were all sort of of the same understanding coming out of the last meeting that, yeah, that the property is not compliant with.
Yeah.
With, with the Architectural Access Board standards, and that, that document details in, in the ways that it is not. Um, and I'm, uh, I can't walk and talk at the same time, Tom, but I'm, I'm trying to bring up that transition plan for you now.
Uh, before we start talking, um, we did close out the public hearing last time, and I was sort of looking at a lot of the information. Um, and, um, we can have a discussion, um, but my preference would be to make a motion and have the discussion follow the motion, if folks think that's appropriate. And the motion would be, I approve to, I move to approve the application site plan as presented for the construction of lighting on the soccer field, subject to the following conditions. That an accessible path provided to the seating area, compliant with five-two-one CMR, that the existing bleachers and viewing area be made accessible and compliant with regard to five-twenty-one CMR. And that the compliant pathway and seating, um, actually, as the Recreation Commission shall obtain engineering warrant of an accessible roof to comply with five-twenty-one CMR twenty. Said roof should be installed in conjunction with the underground installation of lights. I, I would, I would, before we go on with this, suggest you, you said that the existing bleachers be, be made compliant. I would suggest that you use the language that's in Pat's letter, which is an accessible seating area alongside the existing bleachers, because we say they have to make the existing bleachers compliant. That's probably. Yeah, yeah. That was a, yeah, someone, yeah.
And to, to, to piggyback on, on that, I had that conversation. So I was part of the conversation with Pat and Mike Caddy, and I asked that question specifically.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whereas do the bleachers themselves need to be removed and replaced with something compliant, or can, uh, uh, an, an accessible bench or something be provided, uh, next to, obviously. In the same general area, not separating uses, and that, that's acceptable.
So, so the motion was to approve the lighting plan, subject to an ADA compliant path and lighting and accessible ADA compliant seating area.
Yes. Yes.
My shorthand.
Yes. And then, you know, the fourth component of the pathway and seating improvements, um, be completed, um, prior to use of the lights for any activity.
Was that seconded? Is there discussion?
I hear a second on my.
I have a second.
Okay. It's seconded, Tom.
All right. Uh, question is, there are, are other things, if that, put that back up. There are, are quite a few ADA compliant things that were in that, uh, plan. If we could put that back up, why, why would, why would you be, uh, ignoring the other non-compliant areas?
Because we're dealing with the soccer fields right now. You know, this is, uh, you know, they're looking at lighting the soccer fields, not lighting the beach.
We're dealing with, I think, we're dealing, excuse me, we're dealing with adding new, uh, hours and new traffic to an area and, and with it is uncompliant as we speak. So.
Tom, that is the, that is the earlier, there were two separate, uh, site plan approvals requested. The first one is the one that we're not acting on tonight. Quite frankly, I think this one will be moved if.
I thought this was light. I thought you would, I thought this was about the lights.
This is lights. This is not the one that exchanges, that changes.
The lights is gonna increase, the, the lights is gonna increase the amount of, of traffic, which is fine, but if it's not compliant, it isn't, it isn't fine. So our question is. I- is it compliant now? Will it be compliant in the future? The answer is no to both, until they show us that they're going to do that. And if Mike could put up all of those issues that are on that. That page, could you put up the beach project and the compliance issues, Mike? All the access issues that they were talking about? It's not just one. Yeah, keep going.
Um, this is a, this is the transition plan that was, that come up like a while, like a couple of years ago.
Seventeen.
And, yeah. And this is something that the town works towards. Um, that's, this is, I, it's not practical, it's not feasible. And it's, it's not, I don't think it's appropriate to ask, and why, uh.
As, as.
Do all of the, all of the reports for the.
Read this transition, can you read this, please, and then tell me that it's not a problem?
I think, I, um, Tom, I think, no one said it's not a problem, Tom. Yeah, I think we, we read it. I think we read the letter from Pat Roach. I think we listened to the. That Mike had with, um, the center.
That letter was that.
You know, and they were comfortable, and they were comfortable moving forward with the lighting, um, you know. And saying it did not trigger the realization of this entire plan. And so.
Not reading, why are you not reading this Upton Town Beach Athletic Facilities access assessment? This is the assessment we're working on. Everything in this assessment should be addressed in the motion. If they're gonna fix one thing, why aren't they fixing them all so we don't get fined?
Field. We're not talking about everything else. You know.
The beach project.
Yeah. So I think that, no, this is a soccer, this is restricted to soccer fields. And so I think to facilitate, there is a, a, you know, to facilitate, you know, I, I. I think that youth soccer has been, you know, generous in offering to, um, put in the lighting and to handle some of these issues. Um, I don't even know if these, what we are requiring them to do exceeds what they're willing to do. I know that Linda has been generous with her time and advice, and I do believe that she is comfortable with this.
Where is, where, I.
This proposal.
The beach project is out of compliance. We're making it worse without having them fix what's gone wrong first, before they go on to something new. License.
Who's them?
We're not fixing anything that's broken, we're just adding on to it. It's ridiculous.
Yeah. So I'm seeing that a motion has been made in second. Is it inappropriate to have people from the audience speak?
Not typically. Not typically. Usually the board makes the, you closed the.
We've heard of the public hearing. Yeah, the public hearing is closed, so we're not gonna be accepting comments from the public. So I have a motion. I've seconded it. We've heard Tom's, um, comments. Um, does anybody else have any comments?
I, I think it's. You know, while we're not gonna be in compliance on this site or other sites in town, I think it is very important that we continue to move towards compliance so that more people can. Enjoy the benefits of Upton, whether it's athletics or passive or this building. Um, so I, I think it's a step in the right direction. I, I. Completely agree with Tom. It's, it's not, it is not a completed project. Um, but I think it's a step in the right direction, and I think. It should be the town as a whole, not necessarily one group that fixes the, the problems, so.
It's just medicine problems. Uh, Margaret, do you?
I know, I think Paul just summarized it quite well. If you have anything, Dan?
No, I see this as step one. We're fixing the soccer field and making it compliant. That's, that's a good step.
Well, we may. Um. So this motion made and seconded, um, any further discussion? Okay, we'll vote. Paul?
Aye.
Margaret, Tom, Ken?
Aye.
Tommy?
No.
Catherine, aye. Now that this has been.
And nothing about, nothing about, you gotta, so you gotta, you got the police to close this thing. You didn't even talk about that. The police closed it and the, and the, uh, when did they close it? How long after this quote? I mean. The way the thing is managed has changed as well. You didn't even address that.
Um, I would offer to the board in response to Tom's comments that, uh, you didn't vote on the site plan for the hours.
Yeah.
Tonight, um, if there are outstanding issues like those, those specifics, Tom, like you just mentioned, uh, you have another opportunity to address those through conditions.
Uh, and so now, no, we're gonna do it before you. So now that the, this motion has been voted on, I do wanna ask the folks from youth soccer if this is something that they could do. Neil?
Yes, the, um, we did look at the, um, path requirements that were in the document, and this is completely something we're, we're willing to take on.
Okay.
Yeah, we're absolutely for improving the soccer field, one hundred percent. We have no issues with that.
And all our fields. And.
Thank you.
So.
So this has been voted on and approved. So thank you for your patience and thank you for, you know, working with us and with the town and.
You know, guys too.
Getting to those. Yeah. Very much.
Thank, thank you for the late hours and meetings.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd suggested to the board that you might wanna hold off on voting on the other one, because we don't have representation from Recreation Commission, but obviously that's a board and the chair, uh, of the, for you. Sounds like you, everyone's waiting till recreation is actually available to be able to be in the room to, if there's.
Yeah.
Questions, so.
Sure. I take it, I think it's very.
Um, I'll get a extension from Maria, because I do believe that, even though it's local control site plan and your rules and rights for cycling, there still is a, a timeline. Yeah.
Okay. So, next thing on the agenda is.
One, one more comment, Mike, on that. Just, we will not, if the upper parking lot is not approved, or the change is not approved of there, we won't light that parking lot. So it will be important for us to figure that out, you know, sooner rather than later.
Okay, of course.
So hopefully the next meeting, Maria, can make it. Okay.
I will. If, um, if for some reason she can't, I'll, uh, try to front load.
Yeah.
As much information as possible to assist the board with.
Or maybe get someone else from the commission to.
Yeah.
Just, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. So.
Do you need anything out of us in the meantime?
No, you just, you have the approval, so you can, you know.
So, yeah, your next step, guys, is, is, um, Town Manager's Office.
Okay, that's what, that's what we're looking for. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
Appreciate the time.
Okay, thanks.
So the next item on, and Len, thank you very, very much for all your help on this.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Welcome. Um. So the next thing is a public meeting, Selden Springs. You have a Spanish request for a new, new covenant.
Oh, right. Um, I had, actually, Grace followed up with the planning, uh, minute planning board on that. Grace, can you share what you found out? Oh, and so, so I'm sorry, to recap, uh, there was, um, a question when I brought this to the board originally from Tom, which is. Is the Upton side of the subdivision accessible, um, through the roads that are already in place? And is the, um, is, is it passable in, in any way? So.
The front amendment.
From.
Amendment, yeah. It never was gonna be a site. Upton, no.
The town planner had told me that there is access, the side is paved. Um, the road is waiting on public access. Other than that, there is access.
The, um, the applicant's attorney, I believe this is the, this, the document that they had to. The extension of, of, of the covenant. Um, which had expired when? When was the last time it expired? Was it twenty twelve?
I, I believe so.
Yeah, I was on Concombs though when this went through.
Yeah. So we'll come through that subdivision to make sure there isn't any other outstanding administrative documents that need to be updated through the, uh.
So this is just a page of work. Any questions on this?
So what do they want us to do?
Just extend it?
Extend the, the covenant, cause it expired back in twenty.
Two thousand five.
Or something.
And have they built the open site?
Well, they're, they're beginning to now. That's why this is coming up, because they.
That's what I was hearing today.
The covenant that they want us to, yeah, prove. Um, yeah, update it to twenty twenty. Yeah.
During the slight walk, it's Concombs, and looking through the woods to see if I could see my roof, and I couldn't see much.
That's nice. And the only reason we're doing this, Mike, is because. And the only reason we're doing this, Mike, is because it's expired at its own terms or.
Correct.
Operational law.
Yeah, just, uh, the document itself expired, uh, because it was set to expire. Yeah, I, I think the original date was twenty twelve when we looked at it.
I would move that we approve. To keep the new covenant.
Second up. Question, and I don't think it has anything to do with it, but is there? I guess it wouldn't be. Okay. I'm speaking of another issue that's coming up for us tonight, one about bonds.
Right, right, right.
Okay. So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Call to vote. Paul?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Catherine is aye. Okay, uh, next issue is Mayflower Drive Road Acceptance.
We gotta sign.
Oh. Yeah, multi task, Paul?
I can, you can. Next. Great. Great stuff. Jesus.
We're gonna have to have a party for you. You have to stop traveling for a while.
No party.
Yeah, right.
There'll be one guest missing.
Come on, we'll all go to the, we'll go to the group hall down here.
Some of the big mother mosquitoes, don't get Gary's.
It's true.
Okay, um, so the next item of this discussion, Mayflower Drive Road Acceptance. Parkford Highlands subdivision, subdivision rules and regulations. Do you want to talk a little bit about what's going on?
Yep, this is just more of an update. Um, the, I, I had forwarded the neighborhood group, uh, the general information as far as what is required for street acceptance and, um, what is required to, uh, get a citizen's petition together, uh, which I see that's, that's probably where this is heading. Um, as I, I did speak, I was able to speak with, um, Dan. Hmm. Uh, was the developer's name, uh, Henley or Healy?
Healy.
Healy, Dan Henley.
Healy, he, he, yeah. He.
Um, I was able to speak with him, uh, to get a sense of where he is with the project. And I was, I was really thankful for his, uh, very frank candor with me. Uh, he, he is not in a position that he thinks he can finish, uh, the improvements to that road anytime within the next year, uh, which is unfortunate. Um, but it at least gives us some definite to work with in the meantime. Um, so obviously he's understanding that he has, you know, he still has a seventy thousand dollar bond that, that is a cash bond and is, is with the town currently. Um, so I haven't been in a position before where, where a town is, uh, uh, had, uh, had the chance to accept the road that's never been completed by the developer. Uh, my assumption, so my, my assumption is that what, what'll end up happening is that the neighborhood group will submit a citizen's petition and either they'll, now maybe they don't get enough signatures to get on for, uh, fall, but they'll prob, will probably be in this, revisiting this for next May, um, twenty twenty-five. And, you know, that'll come to this board for recommendation. As Tom noted before, you know, it'll probably be a negative recommendation just because the road doesn't meet standards. Um, but then, you know, who knows, it might get actually approved at, at a town meeting for, for various other reasons. Um, and, and at that point, I assume the town can probably use, uh, the bond that is submitted in order to make those improvements. But, you know, in the meantime, I'll be in touch with town council to figure out exactly how that, how that should go. Um, so that's all an assumption on my part as to, uh, how I expect things to go. But in the meantime, I did reach out to DGT, who was the peer review engineer on that subdivision. There is about fourteen hundred bucks left in the asset round. So, uh, as our, last time I asked the board, uh, and I followed up on it, is I asked him to, uh, go out and review everything and review and document everything that has not been done in order to finish that subdivision and update the, uh, cost analysis of those improvements, uh, that was previously provided, uh, to this board for that subdivision for the purpose of submitting the seventy thousand dollar bond. So, um, we'll get a, so that'll be helpful information. You know, it'll be out of date the second he puts it down on paper, but it'll, but obviously give some, a, a minimum cost of, of what it'll cost to complete those, those, um, uh, those improvements. And that'll obviously very, be very helpful to the DPW, which is ultimately their responsibility to do so.
So I have a question. You said Mr. Healy wouldn't be able to come up with these. Said he didn't think he'd be able to do it for a year. If we're waiting till the Springtown meeting, that's over a year. Uh, did he basically say he's not gonna do it?
I got, I got that, that's, that, you know, he said, I mean, he said definitely not within a year.
Okay.
I sort of took that to mean probably padded out a little bit too.
Is that because of his financial ability?
Yeah.
Has the homeowners, us, had, that, the people who own homes there, since their agreement was with him, have they considered litigation?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't feel necessary. I feel like not necessary, but I don't feel, um, comfortable, uh, yeah, inquiring about.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Although it's, if, if those neighbors are asking the town to pay for it and they have a contractual right to pursue the developer. I, I haven't dealt with this before either, but.
Imagine that to them at the last meeting, I think.
Yeah, but if they're not going to.
Yeah.
They should, at a minimum, or we should ask town council whether the town would take an assignment of those claims.
Oh, okay.
What, what does that mean?
Let, let's say they could sue him.
Yeah.
We can't. I'm not sure if we can, but that would be a good thing to ask town council. Is there a benefit to? If the, you know, let's say we're gonna get seventy thousand dollars from the buying company. It costs a hundred and forty to do it.
Yes.
We're gonna tell the citizens, the town's not gonna do it unless you come up with another seventy. They could sue Dan for seventy grand plus. If they're not gonna do it, they should at least give us that, their claims.
Yeah.
Okay. Chase money for a living, so.
The, uh.
Just a thought.
Bottom line on this, these, these homeowners pay taxes, just like everybody else does. They should have access. They should have the bus and the mail.
Hmm, yeah.
And if this guy, and if this guy's not gonna finish it, uh, I, I think the town, because these people are paying full tax rate, should, should finish it and get whatever we can through whatever means from the developer.
What if it's a million?
But we should proceed as a planning board to, to get this on the town warrant for these people, to help them, let them submit it and help them get it on the warrant. Because we have to hold a public hearing.
I mean, their agreement was with the developer. Mm-hmm. You know, I, I'm having a hard time with that, Tommy. If you contract with somebody.
You should be having to go after them.
You should have to be going after them.
I, I just don't want the, you know, with, with these kids, with the weather we're having on, these people shouldn't have to walk their kids out to the end of the street if they're paying the same tax rate as people next door are, that are in an approved subdivision or whatever.
They're driveway, Tom. Yeah. Um.
Well, you know how far I go to get my mail, so.
Oh. Yeah, I walked up, there was a sheet of ice.
You, wow, eh.
Yeah.
Again, you know, there's, there's only a few things, a few things we can do, right? I mean, we can, uh, thank you, Michael, for passing information on to those folks. You know, maybe we can.
Yeah.
Look, look at whether there's other avenues for, you know, completion, but, you know, probably, probably the develop, the developer is a one project LLC that was created and probably doesn't have a current asset to.
Yeah.
But, you know, that's generally the way it goes, but who knows?
I think the bond was submitted by, like, Mayflower Drive LLC or something.
So any other conversation on this? This, you know, we said this is gonna be ongoing. Okay. Next, uh, issue item on the agenda is RFQ for MBTA Communities Technical Assistance Grant.
Oh, right. Yeah, last time, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, through, through the chair, uh, last time we left it off, um, so I said that's ending a very long meeting, and so the board just deferred to me and you uh, to, to look at this. But since that time, um, I honestly hadn't had a chance to even, um, touch these bids until, like, yesterday. Um, so when Kathy came to the office and we, we both looked at them. Um, and then also, uh, I'd received another bid in the meantime, which was great, um, and from, uh, a reputable firm, um, uh, LDS, Lindy Suites, Lindy Suite. Um, so right now we have one, two, three, four, five bids. One from RKG, uh, again, very reputable firm, one from Community Scale, which seems like a newer firms, but they're doing a lot of work in state, uh, these days. Uh, CMRPC, Strategy Five, and LDS, like, um. Only four, five, five.
But you were trying to be.
Yeah, I'll, I'll mention, so CMRPC only bid on the technical assistance portion of it, and they, they bid eighteen thousand on that, um, which is not, unfortunately, I, I, I wouldn't, we, we wouldn't be able to select them because, uh, there isn't a bid for the economic feasibility analysis portion that is only twelve thousand because I have a thirty thousand dollar, uh, grant that I'm working with here. Um, so that would be, uh, you know, wouldn't be able to do that. And then Strategy Five, they bid sixteen thousand four hundred on the, uh, the economic feasibility analysis, uh, but didn't, uh, bid on the technical assistance. So we have then RKG, Community Scale, and LDS who bid on both, which is great. Um, you know, RKG for the roughly twenty nine thousand, uh, and that is, that's both, they wrapped in, into that quote there, EFA as well as the technical assistance.
I thought RKG had the technical assistance as an add-on. I thought they didn't include it in their testament. Um, they said that they would do it, but it would cost more. Um, yeah, the tasks here don't have to do with, um, it's twenty nine four nine zero, but it had nothing to do with technical assistance. They have a section here that the technical assistance can be, you know, just to interject for a second, it says, um, there's, um, there's a second section saying, which was really good. When I looked at these, um, I preferred RKG except their price because the technics, technical assistance, I believe, was separate. Um, and I'm thumbing through, trying to find it. Um.
These, in their, their cost breakdown, it's, they have a.
Well, the, the, the EFA.
EFA, EFA, EFA for the first three, and the third one is the final technical memorandum that is the, the EFA.
Yeah.
So this, this amount, actually, I should just total it out, whatever that, you know, nine hundred thirty dollars plus nine thousand plus about five thousand. Um, so they're, they're roughly in line with, um.
But that's for the EFA.
EFA for, uh, with what Scratchy Five had noted. So there's something, somewhere between, into the math quickly, fifteen and sixteen thousand for just the EFA. And then everything else they noted were, um, uh, compliance, uh, tasks that were noted on the interim compliance plan that was submitted to the state. So that's what they were suggesting uh, to help us out with, um, technical assistance is to address those, those various components.
But they weren't talking about the public, like ancillary.
Correct.
Yeah, see, something that I saw, you know, I've been watching very carefully what's been going on in Milton. And, um, I think it's really important to come up with, um, and think of, the Attorney General did sue the town.
Yes, today.
And so, um, I think having help develop, uh, develop materials and to help with our, our messaging. I think we need to do our own messaging, but I think having assistance, you know, I don't, you know, is important.
But so I would say my, my understanding of what they're saying about their technical assistance, or maybe that, that's this community scale, right?
Yeah, there's a section here saying add on MBK technical assistance.
So, yeah, but it says the EFA is the first three tasks.
Margaret, in your hand is, uh, Community Scale.
Yeah.
That breakdown you're looking at is RKG.
Oh, that's why.
This is, this is what it said. It says, by not part of the sculpted budget effort, RKG associates and our subconsultant partners cannot offer digital services, and it lists them.
Okay.
So again, my first preference would be RKG, except I'd like to have that part added into it, and, you know, this is just my opinion. Uh, when I talked to Mike about it, he said he could talk to them about maybe doing that.
Yeah, switching out. I could ask them if they could switch out what they did, uh, cost, uh, break, breakout for cost for technical assistance. Switch that out with more of the community outreach ambition if they're, they're able to do that. Um, L, uh, Lynn, uh, Lynn Sweet Elliott, LDS, um, I believe she noted that as a, as a.
Yeah.
Portion of, of her technical assistance. Um, so, but she, she talked to me on the phone. She said that's, that's something that they love doing.
Yeah.
Job, you know.
LDS was my second.
Um, and I'm not as familiar with, uh, Community Scale, but it looks like, you know, they've done a lot of very recent work specifically with MBTA communities if you look at what they provide. So, um, I think those are three great choices, quite honestly. Um, I, I, Kathy, seems like Kathy's preference is to go with RKG, uh, if they can provide more, um, community outreach as a part of their proposal. I'm happy to go back to them and ask that question, and if they can and they're agreeable, would, would it, would it be your preference, the board's preference, the?
My, my, my guide is that if you, if you, you should speak to all of them because you're the one that's gonna be working with them the most closely. If you feel like I'm gonna be able to really work with these folks.
Yeah.
You know, I cer- certainly want to hear that from you, but you think.
No, I, I, I.
Yeah, when you say all of them, all of them that are in, like, in the neighborhood, CMRPC, you've eliminated.
Yeah, the top three, yeah. Yeah, because I was just looking at, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that's an excellent idea. Um, because of, RKG looked really good, um, LDS looked really good. I mean, RKG is pretty big, so I think they had a slickness to them and they, you know. LDS, I think, is smaller. Community Scale, I think, is, as you said, is new, but they, they all look good.
Yeah.
And, um, I like, you know, the people all are good.
Yeah.
You know, so, so, yeah, I have no problems with that. Um, just a question. I think they also, they could start immediately, correct?
I, I believe so. I'll, I'll double check that.
Because we want to have this, I think, a key thing is we want to put this on the fall meeting.
Oh, yeah, I'll follow, before I commit to anybody, I'll, I'll make sure.
Because in case it fails, we want to be able to go back.
Before we get sued.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and lose a lot of fun. That's our.
No, I was talking to Mike to make sure we spent the sewer money already.
Well, you're gonna talk to, talk to the top applicants and make a final recommendation to the board?
Sure.
Sounds great.
I'm fine with that.
So we can wait three weeks or do we just? Yeah.
No, I'll just, I'll just, I'll report to the board at the next meeting who was, who was selected. I'll, I'll loop you in, obviously.
Okay, okay. Okay, cool. A good idea, Margaret.
It was just past the buck, you know? Good idea, but, but seriously, we're not gonna be dealing with that.
Yes, we are. Well, not the same way Mike is. So any other discussion on these?
Now, I do move that Paul Carey be required to do the, uh, the annual evaluations of all, uh, our staff.
Not given.
So, next.
Thanks, Tom.
Next item on the agenda is, um, amendments, um, to the zoning bylaws, uh, with the, you know, in particular to the accessory dwelling units. Um, town council has some issues on that. So do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, Florida is, I mean, not, it's, not surprisingly, town council had a lot of issues with it. Um, admittedly, I, I didn't have a lot of time to put that together for the, for the warrant. Um, and so, uh, but I, I, I was reading through the comments again today. Um, I mean, there's a lot of notational things. Um, there's, you know, she calls out specifically the fact that, you know, we're sort of providing a definition that's slightly different from what is in, uh, uh, chapter four, uh, forty A. The section one for definitions, uh, because the state actually provides a, a definition of accessory dwelling units. Um, so she made the. Um, so she made the comment of, you know, is it, is it, is it better to really just steer towards that existing definition? Uh, or, or, and if you don't, then the suggestion is to just change the terminology back to something like accessory apartments. So there's not confusion, uh, which, which is a valid point, um, and then there's other comments as far as, you know, not limiting. She, she expressed the same concern I had about, um, limiting to family members. Um, and that, that, that not, some, it's just not gonna fly, uh, when, when fair housing is challenged. Um, so she, she called that out specifically, um, she had sort of questions about the threshold of. Uh, nine hundred square feet as being what is, you know, the difference between what would be allowed per special permit and what would be allowed by right? And she had a lot of concerns with just that, that language being, um. Uh, easily digestible and, and understood, um, and, and clear as far as what does require a special permit and what is allowed by right. Um, she felt that that was not, that was not, um, distinguished, uh, uh, between the two enough. Um, so, yeah, a lot of concerns, uh, you know, I think the, the. The, the language is, is probably workable, depending on what, um, how the board wants that language to read. I mean, the intent of that language was a, was my best attempt to summarize the, the conversation that, that, that led up to that. And so, what I did i- in the, in the draft was provided a, a special permit option and a buy right option. So the buy right option, what I had intended to do was say, anything up to nine hundred. Square feet would be allowed by or if, especially if it's within an existing home, something like that. Anything sort of beyond that would be, require a special permit, that was the intent of what I, I, I tried to do, um, in the draft. And so, and we can take it from there, I mean, those, those were really the, the biggest swings, um, she, she did confirm. Again, a, a, a point that this board had made, which was, uh, it's, it's good to, to maintain. A home, homeowner occupied unit for either, either, um, scenario, um, so she confirmed that. Um, so, I, I was, I, I defer to the board as to what you wanna do with this, um, bylaw right now, with the amount of. Concerns, questions, and corrections that town council had on it, do you wanna hold off, uh, on, for another town meeting to address this? Are you gonna try and address this through public hearing?
Well, the substantive issue, which I think was raised at the last meeting, was, um, that, in her opinion. The ADUs or ADAs, as they would now be called, um, could not be limited to family members. And I think that the last conversation we had, a few members of the planning board, uh, were concerned about that. Because that sort of gives everyone a right to sort of build a unit in their, you know, another house in their backyard. Um, and, you know, and then we had further discussion about, well, if the, the house is home of a homeowner occupied. You know, they're not gonna want, you know, someone they know is a serial killer living there, but, you know, it's sort of like. Are we comfortable moving forward in the spring, or, I guess a lot of information coming out about ADUs, ADAs. Uh, you know, the, uh.
CMRPC.
CMRPC, as you tell, it's getting, I see, CMRPC is gonna be having a workshop on them, you know, a lot of towns are starting to do this.
Yeah.
Um, I would personally be very comfortable waiting till the spring. I do know that, I mean, fall, yeah. Uh, because I think there's a lot of stuff that has to be sorted out, but if it's the will of this group to, you know, move it forward. You know. I would suggest that we would have to change, you know, make the changes that town council, including.
Madam Chairperson, if I may, uh, make a comment?
Yes, Tom. I was thinking at the T on screen.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things I, I would like the board to do, if you agree, is, uh, this, when I read that, uh, that plan. That transition plan, the, uh, for the whole town, um, one of the things that, the first thing it said was, we're not in compliance with anything. Because we don't have a, uh, an ADA coordinator or a disabilities commission, so when we talk about any kind of. Uh, compliance, uh, shouldn't we send a letter to the selectmen asking if they're going to fill those positions? So that we can be in compliance for all of these.
We're, we're talking about the accessory dwellings.
Yeah, yeah, which is now called ADA, cuz it's.
I didn't want to forget, uh, my, my pills are starting to work, and I didn't wanna forget that, um, and I didn't wanna gloss it over. That we don't have any of these, uh, we don't have an ADA commissioner or a disabilities commission, and, and. We're gonna get fined, uh, I think what the planning board did tonight is gonna get us more fined, because we're just going more on what we know we're, we're wrong on. So, and, and then, um, but changing the subject, doesn't the, the Attorney General, uh, approve our bylaw? If we were to put this, no matter what our town council said, if we were to approve this bylaw, wouldn't the Attorney General say it was right or wrong?
Yeah, the Attorney General would weigh in as to whether or not, um, what is presented, uh. It is, is, I mean, they reject bylaws i- if something is incongruent to the state constitution.
Doesn't that supersede town council law? Wouldn't that be more pertinent to the planning board than the town council, if the Attorney General said it was okay?
Uh, no, cuz the Attorney General just says that, the Attorney General, if they say it's wrong, it's wrong. If they don't say it, it's wrong, doesn't mean it's right.
Right.
If we get, if we get challenged over this, we're gonna need town council's help, so we should probably make sure.
Yeah, and thus, Tom, uh, through the chair, um, in the case of the concern regarding fair housing. You know, it's entirely possible that the, the Attorney General's office could approve a bylaw that provides for that restriction. But that wouldn't protect the town over, um, you know, discriminatory claims based on fair housing.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess the question is. Given. The discussion we had at the last meeting, do we want this to go forward, if so, in what form? Or do we wanna wait till the fall?
I used to have questions, um, the questions I can't, and it could be even, you have the first edit there. They took accessory and deleted apartment, so I don't know, are we really defining just the word accessory? I don't know what that means, so, and, and just.
They took out units and put in apartments.
Well, if you just, the first, it's, it's just odd.
Oh, I see, I see.
So, I mean, I just don't think that even town council's comments are ready for prime town quite yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I didn't have time to, that, her comments with her before tonight either.
But this is, this is true affordable housing.
Yeah.
With a small A.
Yeah, be, being able to, to put your, your parents or your kids on the same property, single family zone, without the expense of, of, uh, uh, another house. It's, it's a good idea.
But coun- council also seems to say.
You can't limit it.
We can't limit it, so it's, you know, not just affordable housing, but an option for a source of income for somebody.
Which is actually another positive for it, because if you're a senior and are struggling to live in your house. You can make a small, like a building outside, a small house and rent it out, and that'll help you pay your bills. So again, I, I fully agree with the small A affordable housing, I just really think that.
That's a big concept that we haven't really.
We haven't talked about it, you know?
And it's gonna be a big discussion.
It's gonna be a huge discussion, I, you know, again, I'd be very comfortable living up, I think this is not ready to prime town.
I agree.
Most of the land is single family zone, how does, if, if it's a single family zone to begin with, and we're keeping it a single family zone. Uh, how does that, uh, how does that not, uh, work?
If it's under nine hundred square feet, they could put in accessory dwelling by right.
With a stranger.
I could put mine in my, I could put one in my backyard and allow you to live there, Tommy.
And it does not have to be attached, right? Could be a hundred percent detached.
Yeah, that was in the language.
It has to have its own. Bathroom and kitchen.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe the way that I worded it is that, um, detached, I think, required a special permit currently, currently, we don't, um.
Attached requires a special.
Yeah, because in, in our current accessory apartment unit, um.
It has to be.
Bylaw, it has to be attached, we don't even provide a provision where it could potentially be detached.
Yeah.
I think that makes sense too, because, yeah, you just think of it, you could, you can, if I'm a neighbor. I kinda wanna know where you're citing it, and, you know, the planning board might be able to say, it really should be.
Yeah.
In the east corner, not the west corner, or you shouldn't have the parking.
Right.
Here, it should be over there.
Yeah, the shed has to go through, you know, it's like, yeah.
But if shed doesn't, if it's, you know, I forget what the shed, is it four hundred square feet for a shed? You can, you can get down wherever you want, uh.
Eighty, eighty square feet.
There's only eighty, Tom.
Hundred and eighty?
Might be a hundred and eighty.
So is the will of this board, uh, just sort of hold us off until fall?
I'm gonna cut it in good shape for fall, I mean, I think we don't wanna go up with something that's gonna get shot right back.
Yeah, cuz they're huge, you know, again, I, I, I agree with Tom, I support this. I think it's a great way for seniors to make income, I think it's a great way, you know, it's much better. To have a slip in the backyard, you know, it's like.
Caretakers, help caretakers be able.
You know, caretaker's house, I mean, it's a wonderful concept, but to make it into something like, you know, that, you know, Tommy suggested, he's absolutely right. That every house in a single, you know, well, it's like all family disparate, can be, you know, you're gonna get up two houses. We can all put something in our backyard.
Would there be a limit to how?
Yeah, yeah, why?
My daughter's supposed to work.
Back there.
Yeah, you can build your own little, so I think, you know, I, 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 I think there's issues we have to resolve.
So it sounds like that's the, um, consensus of the board, so I'll reach out to the town manager and see if, um, put the processes to.
To withdraw, yeah. Okay, and is there anybody else to discuss tonight, or we make it through it?
I just wonder, I just wanna ask the board again, when, when we have a, a plan that comes in, we have a director of, of the DPW, of the police chief. We have all of these experts that we refer to, we don't have anybody to go to, to make sure we're in compliance with ADA or AAB. Can we ask the selectmen how they're going to provide the town with the expertise that the boards rely on? Is that something we could do?
I don't have a problem with that, that's fine. So you're talking in particular about ADA compliant, what do you?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about that, you have the ADA and the AAB vote, uh, because the, the recreation shouldn't have to be providing all that stuff. They should be able, just like the roads and the police, they should be able to go to the town.
Oh, I agree.
Board to hear that, and, uh, they have to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, that's, yeah. I think there's a lot of stuff that could be avoided if we had to sit down and somebody on staff to do this. So I, you know, I, I don't think that creates a, you know, requires motion, but.
So, can I, can I just, just to clarify, Tom Davidson is recommending that we increase the number of professional staff. Working for the town above.
You're rubbing off on me, yeah, yeah, you're rubbing off.
Thank you, Mr. Biden.
You're not putting that in the minutes, I, I was like, I thought.
Yeah, I'm making all four.
I'm not sure how big those polls have taken.
Yeah, and all four libertarians in town are sad now.
No, I mean, I think it's important, I, I think like, you know, Lynn has been filling the gap, a lot of the stuff, and she should take it on.
Before that, it was Penny.
Penny, yeah.
And Penny would come to the, and you would.
For their level.
Yeah, but, but she's taken a lot of hits on it, she's right, I mean, she's absolutely right, you know, and it's, it, it sucks.
Tommy, can I tell the Penny Kelly story, it's really your story.
The only person that, that, that a town went at a public meeting to move the town line to get her out of the town.
What?
Yeah, Wes Marrow moved their town line to the Penny's Art.
And, and what?
What happens is a billion dollar ramp leads up to Memorial that not, that nobody's ever used.
Ever uses, oh, God. She'd come in back of the, every meeting, and be like, oh, Penny's hero, this could be lovely.
Did the town line go through her house, but because, because her house, the town line went through her house, but because her bedroom was in Upton, they were able to legally move her into Upton.
Couldn't we have moved her back? Geez.
Well, we are, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if the, the right folks believe it, but we are pretty lucky. That Lynn hasn't made as much of the stink as you see in other towns, there's like, you know, people that are professional gadflies on that issue and others. But once you, once they get to your town, that's it, you're spending money.
Yeah.
That you don't have.
Yeah, no, Lynn is, I mean, one of the things that she's talked about is we have that land up on, you know, grassland. So it's like, take all these things that we're spending tons of money on and space that isn't ideal for them. You know, use Kiwanis as a beach.
Just open space.
No, it's supposed to be recreation.
But there's, I think there's conditions upon, and that's also full edge, and I mean, it's, it's, land isn't what.
It appears to be.
Sold as, yeah, we've, this, this board has seen multiple plans for trash.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And it's okay.
The, the land across Chestnut, you know, Chestnut and Mendon Road.
Yeah.
When they first came in with the pro- proposal for that, it was a full football field.
Oh, yeah.
And a baseball dome, came back in saying we might be able to get just the baseball dome.
Oh, really?
And then, and, and then it's, and then it became four houses.
And then, yeah, and then it became dirt piles for, for years.
Yeah, no, cuz whenever I drive up there, I just see the fields, and if you see the fields and the scrub pine, you think.
Total.
Sure, well, it's total legend and wet look.
Yeah.
I mean, it's all wet too, right, right behind, you know, where the four houses are.
So we can make that our beach area, and turn Kiwanis into, uh.
There you go.
All right.
Try to keep the geese out.
Right.
I think all of Upton is.
The minutes say adjourned at eight forty.
Okay, adjourned.
Gotta be true.
It's gotta be true.